Good afternoon, everyone. We're going to get started now with our policy session of the Phoenix City Council. We appreciate your indulgence for the late start. We had a very, very long executive session, which we got advice from our lawyers. We're getting a little late start, but let us get started. Thanks, everyone, for being here. We do have a quorum of the council. We're going to start this meeting, as we do all of our meetings, with short council follow-up information and requests. I'm going to take the liberty, as mayor, to go first because all of the members of the council unfortunately were awoken in the middle of the night with some very, very sad news. Megan Lang, who works for the Phoenix Fire Department as an alarm room dispatcher, was on her way home from her duties for the evening, helping people who were in tragic situations themselves. She dedicated her life to doing was helping others. Tragically, on the way home on I-17, she was struck by a wrong-way driver. She is fighting for her life right now, as we speak, at St. Joseph's Hospital. She is in extremely critical condition. City manager myself, and I know many, many others from the alarm room coworkers, as well as the Phoenix Fire Department, were there to support her family and her coworkers. And so my only request is that we keep Megan in your prayers, her two young children, her husband, and all of her family. The Phoenix Fire Department is a family, and when there's a tragedy that has struck a family like this, they come together. And in some ways, it's a beautiful thing to see, but it's very sad that happens in these circumstances. It appears that it may have been someone that was severely drunk, who was driving the wrong way on I-17. So just please, please keep Megan Lang, her children, her family in our prayers. We support the Phoenix Fire Department, Chief Cockburner, and the entire family of Phoenix Fire. We are thinking of you, that family, as well. And I'll hand it over to other council members. I know there is other information they would like to get out to the public, but I know they share the sentiment that we are all praying for Megan and her family. Who wants to go first? Councilman Gates.
Thank you, mayor. Wanted to, obviously, we have the Super Bowl in the Valley this week, and a lot of exciting activities upcoming. We have one in District 3, which is going to be this Wednesday evening. I've been involved with the Wounded Warriors over the years, so I'm very excited that they're holding their Wounded Warrior NFL alumni football game in District 3 at Shadow Mountain High School from 6:00 to 9:00. So this is a great opportunity to see some of the Wounded Warriors play against some former NFL stars. And the Wounded Warriors' record, by the way, versus the NFL alums is currently 9-0. So, does not surprise me, again, having worked with the Wounded Warriors over the years, they can do amazing things. And we're so fortunate to have these heroes in the Valley, and specifically in District 3 on Wednesday. And it's only $10 for a ticket. And I hear there may be halftime entertainment from Snoop Dogg. Now, I don't, you know, I'm, you know, we'll have to see on that one, mayor, but the celebrities are going to be in District...
Snoop Dogg? What time is that game?
That's what I hear, 6:00 to 9:00. Also, we're excited, too, on North 32nd. We've been real actively involved with Vice Mayor and the rest of my colleagues on the North 32nd revitalization efforts over the last couple of years. Doing a little "Save the Date" for March 21st, that is a Saturday, we'll be doing our bike ride over there, and also talking about the bike lanes. It will soon be going in on North 32nd. That'll be 8:00 to 10:00 a.m., so I hope you can join us for that. And finally, Washington Elementary School District is hosting a community food drive from February 17th through the 27th, and their goal is to collect 75,000 pounds of food. So please, join the cause. Wonderful school district. I know a lot of us here on the dais have portions of the school district in our council districts, and I think it's great that they are joining together to fight hunger in our community. And please join me in this pledge. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. So the Wounded Warriors are 9-0 against the NFL alumni, and there's no allegations of ball deflation issues. We're good. They don't need to do that.
Of course, they wouldn't do that, mayor.
They're our heroes. Other council members of the council? Councilman Gago, do you have any comments or information for the public?
I do, mayor, thank you. We want to welcome Courtney Carter to our staff. Courtney has served our country, and also has a great technical background, and very interested in planning neighborhood issues, and we are very glad to have him on the team. We also wanted to thank everyone who made the Martin Luther King Boulevard unveiling a success. Councilman Noakowski and I really appreciated the many city departments and contractors who partnered with us, and who worked to make sure that the community was involved. And so, thank you very much for your help and that important recognition of Dr. King's legacy. And really, congratulations to all of the city staff and boards and commissions members who were involved in our very significant recognition of Dr. King. We had many great events throughout the city. We are also looking forward to Super Bowl events. The Wounded Warriors are not coming to District 8, but we will have a great event with the mayor and others on My Brother's Keeper, which is the initiative to try to have better outcomes for men of color at Pilgrim's Rest Baptist Church from 9:00 to 11:00 on Saturday, and we hope people will join us for that. District 8 is also excited to have Connect to STEM in partnership with the University of Arizona and biomedical campus. We'll have a lot of great free events and an opportunity for young people to get exposed to the great scientific work we are doing on the campus. So I'd really encourage people on Saturday after they go to My Brother's Keeper to check out the STEM events going on at the University of Arizona campus. We will have a public transit open house meeting on Thursday, the 5th, at 5:30 at 11:50 South 7th Avenue, and we hope people in District 8 and throughout the city will join us at that event. And we also have a Valley Metro South Central Light Extension meeting coming up on the 4th of February at the Audubon Center at 6:00. And then Councilman Noakowski and I are both very much looking forward to the Levine Parade on Saturday, February 7th, and Levine BBQ on Sunday, February 8th. Thank you so much to all of the people who are putting together that great community event. It's one of our signature events in Levine, and a wonderful opportunity for people to come together. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Noakowski.
With that, mayor, I'd like to really thank all of our staff members that worked so hard to prepare for the Super Bowl. I mean, all the activities in downtown Phoenix, I mean, from our streets to parks to all the different departments that really worked hard to make this a success. If you haven't had a chance, the NFL experience, what a great experience. I have five young children, and we were there all day yesterday, from 1:00 till 9:00 at night, and, I mean, it was nonstop. It's just incredible. If you ever wanted to experience being a professional football player, and how they go through training and all the camps and stuff, that's the place to come. So take the advantage of having the Super Bowl here in downtown Phoenix. Take the advantage of the NFL experience. And Wednesday, take the advantage of all the free concerts and vendors that are going to be out here. And we're going to close down 12 blocks of downtown Phoenix, and it's just going to be amazing to see all the fans, all the people, and all the players that are just going to be walking around. So if you have a chance, come on down. The other thing is, the barbecue at Levine is just amazing. If you've never been out there, it's at Corona Ranch, right off about 29th Avenue and Baseline, and there's going to be a little rodeo going on at the same time. So come on and get some good barbecue and watch a rodeo, and all kinds of information about Levine and all the community groups that are out there. And thanks to councilmember Gago's for all her support in making this a successful barbecue this year, too. And also, I'd like to recognize an individual from our aviation department. I'd like to recognize James Davies, that is in charge of our noise and abatement specialists for the city of Phoenix. We had three public hearings about the flight path, and one person that kept on being mentioned is James, and how he really, that customer service. You know, he's received over thousands and thousands of calls about the noise that's, with the new path and all that. But the customer service and the way that he treated people, and to hear it from the community themselves, saying that sometimes they even feel bad that they're yelling at this young man, and he's responding in a positive way, saying, "Yes, ma'am, I know that's happening, but can you give me the information? Thank you, ma'am." He goes, "Wow, this, what a gentleman." And so with that, I'd like to present to him a Community Outreach Award from District 7, on behalf of all the residents of District 7, if you'd like to come to the side right here. Thank you, James.
Thank you for your service, and continued service. Excellent. Councilman DeCecio.
Well, nothing much more than the, I think it's a great day for, or a great week for the city of Phoenix, if you look at all the things that are happening in our community, mayor. I think it's just fantastic. We've got so much life downtown right now. We've got a lot of activity. Matter of fact, you can't even get around on some of the streets, which I think is kind of neat in a way, because it greets a pedestrian-friendly environment. But I, when it comes to the Super Bowl issues in the NFL, I have to admit, I'm not a huge NFL follower. I'm a huge football, college football follower. And I was just recounting a story just recently, just to give everybody, and I know there's a lot of NFL football fever, Super Bowl fever going on. Nothing could be more pronounced than my wife right now. I mean, she's following everything. She even took a few days off from work in order to go to places where she thinks that some of the football players are going to be. Matter of fact, she even gets on me. So for those of you that are viewing this, and you're not following as much, I'm one of them, but she even used to get on me when, on Sundays, and say, "Why isn't there a game on TV?" So I guess I'm kind of lucky in that respect, if I'm watching something else.
You're a football widower.
Yeah, to some degree. Well, if it was college ball, I could watch it from early morning to late at night. But pro, I just, you know, I like it. I think it's fantastic to watch, but I'm one of the few out there that, you know, I like watching the Super Bowl.
Councilman, you're in luck. Next year is the college football championship.
I know.
Going to put on one heck of a show on that one, too.
I've gone to them, you know, I've gone to a few of those, and they're really good. They're fantastic. And college football fans are amazing.
Mayor, I just found out it was Sal's birthday yesterday. He turned 21.
21?
Yeah, well, a little older than I thought I was.
Happy birthday.
Thanks, mayor.
Other councilmembers? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. We really appreciate Chief Yanner coming out to our district meeting. Last week, we had a nice turnout, and had good questions, and I hope people got their questions about the police department answered, and we really appreciated that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Councilman?
Thank you, mayor. I want to thank Cortez High School for hosting last week's special public safety and veterans subcommittee meeting. And especially, I want to say a big thank you to Principal Walt Simpson, Senseful Principal Prin-, Assistant Principal Justin Tarver, and Teacher Lael Kirkhart. This Friday is breakfast at Deer Valley Airport.
Do you want to take a break, and then come back to you? Councilwoman Pastor?
So I would like to thank everybody that participated in the aviation transportation meetings. Also, I wanted to recognize all the volunteers that are participating in the VIDA, the 2015 Earned Income Tax Credit Campaign. There are many volunteers, but there are also many city employees volunteering to do this, so I'd like to thank them. On Saturday, Phoenix Union had a huge experience of College Go, and it was over 3,000 students and parents on the PC campus, and it was very exciting. And on top of that, we, I also attended Arch Kids. Arch Kids is a nonprofit that helps those that are disabled and have disabilities, and they provide services for them, and they are going to have, they have been granted monies to expand, so it was a great groundbreaking that I attended. And of course, I'd like to thank the Consul Rodriguez for taking time to speak to me about education and the arts between Phoenix, developing a partnership between Phoenix and Mexico, and doing exchanges, and I really want to thank him for taking time to meet with me. And of course, Super Bowl, Super Bowl, and I enjoyed the NFL experience with my family like no tomorrow. I never understood what it was all about, but I enjoyed all the time that I could spend with my family at that moment, doing photo booths, making all these great moves, and also participating in the tackle relay, and being able to do those activities and pretend it like I was a football player, and I still had it at my age. So I was very proud of it. So please participate, please enjoy all the great activities that are free within our city, and have a wonderful week. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman, please.
And I just want to be clear for the media, Dustin. I bought all my tickets. Everything is purchased.
Congratulations. Good job. Councilman Valenzuela?
All right. Thanks, mayor. Excuse me. I also went, in fact, I was there after you, councilwoman, at the Helen Drake Senior Center, not at the NFL Experience, I haven't had the opportunity yet, but, you know, thanking all of the volunteers that do this citywide. They work on this Earned Income Tax Credit Campaign. They're helping people file their income tax, you know, working families. I think the average that I was given, the average price, nearly $250 is what people are paying to get their taxes filed. And these volunteers are doing it for free, which is a really big deal. It's a lot of, there was a lot of talent in this room at the Helen Drake Senior Center in District 5 for the kickoff, and there are a lot of people really benefiting from that talent, and it was, it was great. In District 5, one of the centers, at the John F. Long Family Services Center, last year, more than 2,300 federal returns were filed, generating nearly $4 million. And I'm just, you know, like I said, I can't say enough about all of the volunteers. These are volunteers, not just, you know, I'm just, I'm very proud of District 5, but these are volunteers from different agencies, or different, sorry, locations throughout the entire city, and just a, just a great program. So thank you to all of the volunteers for doing that. Tonight, we have our monthly District 5 Team Event. It's a community meeting, where we will be hosting it at the Washington Activity Center near 23rd Avenue, south of Glendale. And we will have a public safety update, as well as a transit update. Light rail off of 19th Avenue, if you don't know the area, and I don't know why you wouldn't, because it is District 5, and I would imagine everyone is out there for lunch, or, all right. So 19th Avenue from Bethany Home Road to Dunlap, 3.2-mile stretch. We are really excited. This is, this thing will be operational by the end of this year, maybe early next year. I'm thinking this time next year. And so we're really excited about that. So we will have an update again this evening, 5:30? 5:30, I'm sorry, 6:00 p.m., Washington Activity Center. I want, I had a busy weekend, like I'm sure all of my colleagues, and after I went to the Helen Drake Senior Center, I went over and worked with the kids at Trevor Brown High School. The Stand Student Group is, these are a bunch of students who are from the area, go to Trevor Brown High School off of 75th Avenue, and, and they do a lot to keep El Paso Park not only clean, but what they can do to keep it smoke-free. And they're, they're not, you know, they're not pushing any rules that don't exist yet, but they actually, you know, of course, with gloves, they are doing all they can. You know, imagine a bunch of high school students doing all they can to keep all of the butts of cigarettes off of this, this park and this playground area, because they feel like, you know, they're brothers, they're sisters, their neighbors just don't, they don't need that. And what a great group of kids. We had them here, visiting our office a couple of times. In fact, I brought them into these very council chambers on one particular visit for a tour. So I do want to thank the students of Trevor Brown High School for that. Along, I, too, would like to encourage everyone to come out and check out the NFL experience. This is a, you know, what a great time for Phoenix, but also the Valley. Come on out, and there's just so much to do here. The last time we had the Super Bowl, you'll remember, we didn't have a lot that you see out here. In fact, the NFL experience was in Glendale, and a lot of the restaurants didn't even exist at the time. So there's just so much taking place now. It's just so exciting. And while I, I want to thank all of our city employees for doing such a great job, you know, Ed Zirker, our city manager, you deserve a lot of credit, and I know that you always do the right thing, and give the credit off to everyone else who is on your staff, on our team. You really do deserve a lot of credit. And I'm speaking also as a first responder, because I know that all that goes into the regional plan to keep people safe as well. There's a lot going on between all of our fire departments and police departments and, you know, other, bless you, other agencies, you know, I mean, if you feel safe, that's a good thing, but also just be vigilant, keep your eyes open, and if you, if you see something that doesn't look right, you know, take a second and make a phone call, even if it is 911, the emergency number, if that's the only number you have. We want to, we want to be sure that we stay safe, but I got to tell you, there's such a solid plan in place to keep us all safe here. And I know that my colleagues on the council, who are on the Public Safety Subcommittee, have done such, such a good job of just overseeing that as well. Now, I want to bring up District 5 once again, only because there is a really cool basketball game, an important game, happening in District 5, Grand Canyon University, on Thursday, the 29th, at 6:00 p.m. GCU is taking on Kansas City. And it's been a fun team to watch, you know, Thunder Dan Marley is the head coach, but, you know, this is a year where, where right, you know, right here, University out of Phoenix is playing teams like, you know, for example, Harvard and several other big, big schools. So go on, come on out Thursday, the 29th, and check out the antelopes in action. That's all I have.
Excellent, Councilman. Any particular reason why you mentioned Harvard?
The reason I mentioned Harvard? Nope. No reason, mayor.
Just because you have a couple graduates over here?
Oh, I know. A couple of really smart council members over here, Councilwoman Gago and Councilman Gates. No reason at all, just, I think that was the last big headline, I think, that we all caught.
Councilman Gates makes clear that he only went to law school there. He roots for the Loops, so he's, he's on the Loops team. We're good.
Yeah. Well, I mean, that's not all, I mean, you know, go and catch our Sun Devils and our Wildcats and our Lumberjacks, and I don't want to get on anyone's list here. I'm just, again, the, I am the, yeah.
The games are a lot of fun.
Unapologetic advocate for District 5, so come on out. And Councilwoman Pastor just reminded me, what about the community colleges? I can't win. All right.
Phoenix College is defending national champions in their division. Councilman Williams?
Thank you, mayor. I just want to remind everybody that this Friday is the District 1 Breakfast, 7:30 a.m. at the Deer Valley Airport, and our speaker is Maricopa County Andy Kanasik. And I also wanted to thank every, all the residents who came to the hearing last Thursday evening at the Buff Community Center, reviewing the proposed transportation plan. We had a good turnout, so. And I hear that there's a challenge between Councilman Gates and Councilman Valenzuela and I on who can raise the biggest ton each of canned goods for Washington School District.
Yes.
All right, so.
Which is challenge accepted? I want to make sure it's clear. Let's consummate this deal right now. Has the challenge been accepted? Did he leave? All right. When he comes back, we'll hammer him.
See, he ran away the minute I said it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. And I'll just have one, one final one. Each of us are so proud of people who have dedicated their lives in education, that do their work in our city. So the proclamation, the recognition about the gift could go to so many teachers, but we are so blessed to have uniquely talented teachers and educators in our community. And one that I wanted to particularly recognize is Marisol Garcia, and thank you so much for her, for her service. She has not only been an educator, but has taken her community leadership to a whole new level. She's a board member for the Arizona Education Association. She's the leader in the Isaac School District in that capacity. She's the chair of the Ethnic Minority Caucus. She's the chair of the Legislature Task Force, so thank you for keeping our, taking our legislators to task appropriately so, and making sure they're supporting education, more of them do. She's the Western Director for the Hispanic Caucus for the National Education Association. And so she is here currently. She is with the Morris K. Udall Middle School, and she's been in that capacity for 10 years of service. She's a selfless in her efforts as a teacher and as vice principal, and she exemplifies the generous spirit of our vibrant city. She's brought lots of friends and family with her. Thank you for your patience. I know probably the kids are getting bored there, but thank you for your patience in sitting through our meeting. And you brought with us our friend, Andrew Morrow, who serves as president of the Arizona Education Association, and we want, we waited too long, because you need, you need to get back to the legislature, make sure that they're doing the right thing, so we want to hurry up and do that. So without further ado, I'd like to get a special recognition on behalf of myself and all the council members to a great educator in our community, Marisol Garcia. Next item on the agenda is, is there a call for consent agenda? Vice Mayor?
The sadness of many, there is not.
All right. Tears are being shed currently. Is there a call for an executive session?
Yes. Mayor, in accordance with a properly posted notice and agenda, I move that the city council pursuant to Arizona Revised Statute, Section 38-43, 1.02.0A, meet an executive session on Tuesday, February 10th, 2015, at 1:00 p.m. in the East Conference Room, 12th floor of the Phoenix City Hall, 200 West Washington Street, Phoenix, Arizona.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Next item on the agenda is a report or budget update by our city manager. Do we have anything today, Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, no. We are working towards a February 10th meeting where we will have budget information. I would just also thank Councilman Valenzuela for his nice words about me, but really, the leadership on this has come from you and the city council on Super Bowl, and on the staff side, from Assistant City Manager Milton DeHoney and Deputy City Manager Paul Blue, and I want to thank them as well. And with that, we have a couple of employee recognitions, mayor.
All right. And I think we have two council members we're going to give them. Councilman Williams, do you have a employee recognition?
I do. I'm honored to introduce Kimberly Davidson. Kim began working for the city of Phoenix in 1983 as a contract employee in the survey section of the engineering department. Previously, she had been working for a private survey firm in the engineering field. Kim is a third-generation land surveyor in her family. She was hired to a permanent position of instrument technician in the survey section on February 11th, 1985. On March 4th, 2002, Kim was promoted to the survey party chief. Over the years, she has worked on many construction projects for the city, including what is now known as Piesto Wafery Way, Greenway Parkway, major street repaving projects, and mini pipe and water lines, and Box Culvert Bridge projects. Congratulations to Kimberly Davidson for 25 years of excellent service to the city of Phoenix.
So Ms. Phyllis Arrotrillo began her career with the city of Phoenix on December 11th, 1989, as a caseworker, too, with the Human Services Department. She was promoted in 1997 as caseworker 3, the position she holds today. During her career, Phyllis has worked on several community programs, including the Weed and Seed Program. Mayor, funny guy over here, right? So Phyllis has worked on several community programs, including the Weed and Seed Program, the Family Self-Sufficiency Program, the Youth Families Can Program, Katrina Evacuary Relief and... Families Can Program, Katrina Evacuary Relief and Support, and the Family Alcohol Program. She also obtained her master's degree in organization management. Congratulations to Phyllis Arrotreo for 25 years of excellent service to the City of Phoenix. And you listen to the programs that she's involved in, and that's just the best of humanity. So thank you and God bless you.
Next item on the agenda is item number three, which is going to be a report, recommendation, and possible action for the City Council relative to the work of the Blight Lean Ad-Hoc Committee that was chaired, co-chaired by our very own Councilman Kate Diego. I'm going to ask if she has any short comments to make before we begin the formal presentation. Councilman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for appointing me to co-chair this group with Mark Manoil. Very much appreciate that appointment, and thank you to the Neighborhood and Housing and Development Committee for recommending we go forward with this. It had a couple areas that inspired this committee. One was hearing somewhat difficult to hear stories from neighbors who would share stories, like, "The house next to me, there was a fire. Someone was manufacturing meth. She abandoned the home, and it stood that way for months after months, and then the city came and cleaned it up, and the property owner never came back. What can you do to clean up my neighborhood?" We also heard from neighbors who wanted to know about how we cleaned up properties, what we did covering the windows, could we do more there, and how did we decide what standard we used in cleaning up neighborhoods? And then the second inspiration was Mark Manoil, who is an attorney with expertise in property liens, particularly tax liens, sharing some information with us about the liens we place on this home when we clean them up, and how we were losing that money often that they'd be wiped out in transactions when the property tax liens were used to foreclose. And all of us in these difficult budget times, the idea of city losing money was, was something we wanted to look into. And we convened a lot of technical experts, because it was a very technical issue, and we had great help from the county assessor's office and many of our partners at Maricopa County. So thank you for providing technical expertise. A lot of people in the title business, real estate industry, really stepped up to help us go through this issue. And I'm very proud to bring forward today some unanimous recommendations, which also have the unanimous approval from the Neighborhood and Housing and Development Committee. So there was a lot of time and a lot of technical research. Our own legal department did great work and provided a lot of counsel in late-night meetings. Although we did, I want to note, have a very efficient meeting schedule and sunset on time. So good work on staying on schedule as well. But people really provided years of expertise to this committee, and I was hoping that the members, including city staff, could stand up and we could recognize them for their very hard work on this issue.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Thank you for the leaders of the committee. Thank you. Okay. So, our Deputy City Manager, Deanna Janovich, will introduce the committee, including the co-chair, Mark Manoil. Thank you for your citizen activism and leadership.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have with me today Neighborhood Services Director, Chris Howlett, Mark Manoil, as Councilwoman Diego indicated, and also Tim Bowling, who's Deputy City Manager, or Deputy Director with Neighborhood Services. And Mr. Howlett is going to walk us through the recommendations today.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're here to present to you the three recommendations that came out of the Blight Lean Ad-Hoc Committee, as they were charged by what the Councilwoman just addressed. First off, the committee was very concerned with the appearance and length of time it took to secure properties, as she just announced. And as such, the committee recommends modifying the Neighborhood Preservation Ordinance Board Up Standards to reduce the temporary board up from 180 days to 90 days, and requiring polycarbonate material on all openings visible from the street for any securements extending beyond the 90 days. As you can see from the pictures there, when we have wood securement up for an extended period of time, it's an attraction to criminals to come and do some criminal damage through graffiti. They can break and enter and do other crimes on the inside. Whereas the polycarbonate on the right is more reflective. It has the appearance, an enhanced aesthetic appearance, as though it's occupied, and hopefully it will deter any criminal activity as we go forward. In addition to the enhanced aesthetics that it provides, it also is a more secure securement, a durable securement, as we have evidence with a video here. You've got to like those special effects. Additionally, the committee-
You've got to get a firefighter in there, man. I don't, you've got to get a firefighter. I think I just called on a challenge, didn't I?
I would, District Office would be happy to organize a police versus fire challenge if.
I'll take it.
My bets are on the polycarbonate material. Committee is also concerned with the resident notification when properties are in our abatement process. As a result, they recommend posting the abatement notification on properties before and during the abatement, and removing the notifications after the abatement has been concluded. We don't want to advertise that we have a vacant parcel, so we want to remove it when it's complete. But the notification, they will direct residents, who otherwise may not have known we were even involved in the process, that, one, we are, two, it gives a phone number and a website in order for them to look up the case status of this or any other code enforcement property. We have an Arizona state law that allows us, as a municipality, to abate blight from properties, to further assess a lien against the property with interest bearing on that. And further, it allows us to be able to foreclose on properties that have delinquent abatement liens. The practice to date has been that we allow these liens to sit until a title transaction happens on the property, where we would be paid our, our blight lien amount and any interest due to us. However, we've been at risk, as identified by the co-chair of tax lien foreclosures. And as a result, we would recommend a foreclosure pilot program with the following goals. We want to be able to assess strategies for recovering delinquent and unpaid abatement liens, in addition to the foreclosure pilot program. We want to look at strategies that would create conditions for owner occupancy. To that point, we propose a foreclose that we foreclose on approximately 15 vacant properties that meet the following strict criteria. We want to look for properties that have multiple delinquent abatement liens. These are the properties that are the most draining on city resources. They come one, two, or more times a year, and they come out of compliance. And due to the fact that they're vacant or otherwise unoccupied, and the owners are non-responsive to our notice of violation, we have to go out and re-abate these properties. We want to look for properties that don't have any pending bankruptcy proceedings. We absolutely want to look for properties that are at risk for tax foreclosure. With otherwise not doing anything, we would lose these monies to a tax foreclosure. We want to further look for properties that have a high ratio of estimated property value to the lien amounts on the property. In the pilot, we want to start looking at those ratios at about a 10 to one or more value. Further, we would prioritize these based on total lien amounts that we have on the properties, the highest probability of cost recovery, and the impact to the neighborhood. Remember, the goal here is to replace vacant board up properties with owner occupants who would be paying their taxes and maintaining their properties. Now, it will take approximately $2,000 to $5,000 in legal fees to administer a foreclosure. These fees are recoverable, along with the abatement liens themselves, at the foreclosure sale at the end of the process. For 15 foreclosures, we would estimate needing approximately $75,000 in seed money. We do believe we can handle the 15 foreclosure with current staffing levels. Additionally, we think we can absorb the legal expenses, with the caveat that we'd be able to retain the pilot proceeds in order to support continuing legal fees and reimburse us for our expenditures. At the end of the 15 foreclosures, we expect to recover approximately $150,000 worth of blight liens and legal fees. All the while, we will continue to analyze the data for other strategies in addition to this, as well as the scalability of the foreclosure program. This here is a picture of one of our blight lean properties that we have in our database. This property was built in West Phoenix in 1958. It is currently estimated to value of about $101,000. We have abated this property six times since November of 2011. All six times, we've cleared the lot, and three of the times, we had to re-secure the property with board up to specifications because it had been breached or otherwise out of compliance. Our total abatement liens on this property totaled $6,400. Additionally, this property here is at risk for tax foreclosure. There's three years of liens totaling $2,800. All totaled, we have $9,200 worth of liens on the property, and that would meet our criteria of a 10 to one ratio of value to the liens. It would definitely have an improved impact in the neighborhood to have this property occupied and maintaining itself. So this would be an example of a case that we would bring through our foreclosure pilot. Before we make the final recommendation, I'd like to see if the co-chair, Mr. Manoil, has any comments he'd like to add.
Thank you, Mr. Howlett. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to participate in this ad hoc committee and to bring the recommendations to you. I appreciate the opportunity to have the, to have the notion examined, and then really thoroughly vetted through the committee meetings with the help of excellent staff, and also with the help of the citizen volunteers who served on the ad hoc committee. I don't think time permits us to, to recognize each one of them individually, but I think they were all critical in helping get, get us here. In addition to the recovery that Mr. Howlett mentioned of monies that have been spent by the city to, to try to deal with blighted properties, which is obviously one benefit that we are hoping to achieve, there's also going to be, hopefully, recovery to the neighborhoods affected by the blight much sooner than through an eventual property tax lien foreclosure on abandoned properties. I just wanted to add that, and thank you again for your help with this.
Thank you, Mr. Manoil, for your co-chair leadership, along with the chairperson, for taking on this, this problem. With that, staff recommends the City Council approval of the Blight Lean Ad-Hoc Committee recommendations, including the creation of a pilot program to foreclose vacant properties with unpaid abatement liens.
Wonderful. I would move that the City Council approve the recommendations of the Blight Lean Task Force and the Neighborhood Housing and Development Subcommittee.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Questions, members of this council? Councilman Nowakowski?
You know, Mayor, I'm not sure if you all addressed the fencing issue. We have these temporary fences that go up on blighted properties, and they're temporary fencing, but those fences stay up for years. I know that we've gotten many complaints about, especially small apartment complexes that have temporary fencing, but it becomes permanent fencing. And it becomes a blighted, a blight issue within that neighborhood. I'm not sure if that was addressed, or if you all talked about that or not.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, no, that was not one of the charged items for this ad hoc committee. We definitely can follow up with this item. I know it's been mentioned before, Subcommittee about fencing. We certainly can brief you on the results and the current status of the fencing ordinances.
And, you know, I just want to close off by thanking Mark and Kate Diego for all their leadership in making this happen. This is something that's really needed within our, our city. I know that when we came up with Blight Busters, that was something really great, and this has just taken it to a whole different level. The other thing, too, is in the future, if we can really look into maybe the blighted areas in our trailer parks, because now that's becoming a big issue, not just in District Seven, but throughout the city, where we're seeing more and more blighted trailer parks out there in the community. So I think we need to look into that in the future. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments from members of this council? Councilman?
I too want to thank the committee for working on this, because I think this is a major problem all across the city. I'm, my question is, is how long do you expect the pilot to last? Because I'm anxious to have you expand beyond it.
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, this is an 18-month pilot to try out what we've never tried before and see if there's any unforeseen consequences. We would come back as quickly as possible to the Subcommittee and Council for any scalability as we get through the process and find out research and other strategies we might be able to employ as well.
Good. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? All right. I just want to say thank you to Councilwoman Diego, and Mark Manoil and the staff for putting this together. Very common sense way of dealing with a challenging issue for the city, something we've been vexing us for a long period of time, and I'm excited to take the approach that you've, you recommended. We got to test public policy, see how they work. And then obviously, before we go much bigger and citywide, I think the approach that you've done is a very responsible approach, and I think I'm excited about moving forward with it. Hopefully, it works, and then we can adopt this citywide. Councilman, you have something else?
Wonderful. I just wanted to thank the people who work on, on abating blight in our community. It really, it's hard to think about what we'd look like in some areas, especially at the height of the foreclosure crisis. But, but continuing on very much today without the work the city staff does, and they're going into sometimes open vacant properties where there may be safety concerns. I just want them to know, we very much appreciate that work in keeping our neighborhoods healthy and strong. And I also want to say, one of the, in response to Councilman Nowakowski's comment on manufactured housing, that was one of the people who brought this to my attention, the woman in the trailer with the meth manufacturing was manufactured housing. And I do think this will help in communities with manufactured housing. I think both the standards and just speeding it up, particularly if, if, depending on how they own the land, but it could be very helpful for all of our communities across the city. And also wanted to thank the Fire Department and Neighborhood Services for working together to speed up communications when we do have a fire at an abandoned property, and make sure that everyone knows and can pay attention to that. And also Public, the Police Department as well, that we're just, we also did some recommendations that have already been implemented about improving communication between all our departments when we have a fire. And so that is already something that is helping residents of the City of Phoenix, and I'm glad we were able to address that right away. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Without any other comments, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations. Go forth, do good work. We very much appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is our item number four, which is our sustainability goals and action steps, and really the first chance for our Chief Sustainability Officer to talk about the work that he's been doing since he's been hired here at the city, and hopefully get some direction and action from the City Council on a few very important items. So Mr. Neymar, I'll let you take the lead.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm Deputy City Manager Rick Neymar, and with me is our Chief Sustainability Officer, Mark Hartman. You and the council have made sustainability an important priority for our city, and by hiring a Chief Sustainability Officer, whose focus and full-time efforts are to improve the sustainability, not only of city operations, but of what happens in our larger community, we've really taken the first step. And we're very lucky to have Mark Hartman, who came to us from Vancouver, Canada, recognized as one of the leading cities and communities in the realm of sustainability. They've really done amazing things up there. Not all of them are transferable here, but Mark has worked with city staff and our Environmental Quality Commission, and many, many businesses, ASU and others, to help push forward a number of initiatives here in the city. And one of the things we asked Mark to do was take a bigger picture look at how we're doing. In what areas does Phoenix compare well to other cities? What areas do we need to make some improvement on in the sustainability realm? And in order to do that, what do we, what do we need to do? So Mark has done that, working with a whole team of people at the city. And the Finance Efficiency Economy and Sustainability Subcommittee unanimously recommended, moving forward with what Mark has suggested, which is to develop some long-range goals for the city and some interim targets to really kind of push the ball forward. Secondly, the Subcommittee itself and the mayor, many, many times personally, has asked us to take a look at what we can do in the realm of LED lighting. And so we also have a couple of very specific recommendations on moving forward with LED lighting project that will advance the ball very quickly in that area. So I'd like to turn it over to Mark, and he's going to walk you through some really interesting slides, but without videos of the city manager or council members trying to hurt themselves.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. It's a pleasure to be here today. As the title says, Setting the Year Goals for the Year 2050, it is truly long-term. And the point of 2050 is to really pick a point of- And the point of 2050 is to really pick a point far into the future to say, what is our destination? What are we really, if we achieved all of our policy objectives, what would that city look like? And how, what would it be like to get there? And to really engage that conversation around what is our destination? And it's really important from the sake of as we plan and move ahead today, are we really making progress? How do we track our progress? How do we know we're being successful? And having this endpoint, beginning with the end in mind, to say, let's move and see are we, as we take steps, we actually have 35 years before we get to 2050. So as we take those steps and look at our capital and operating budgets, are we moving towards this final state of what we want to get to? And a bit of the context piece is that typically when talking about the city of Phoenix, you'd think in terms of our city boundaries and our policy landscape would be around the 517 square miles that we have here. But ultimately, when you look at where our resources come from, that 98% of the products we consume, we're a high consumption society, 98% are coming from the outside, from the global economy. And policies we have such as local first are really good policies for lessening our environmental footprint. And Community Gardens is very good at that of really saying, how can we over time, over the long term, as we build infrastructure, really be more resilient as a society, have a resilient economy and a really healthy ecosystem around us here? And so our policy context is very broad. And looking at, this is from, we do a surveys annually to the Carbon Disclosure Project. And one of the questions they ask is recent weather events that we've had. And just sort of a context piece on this as well is that as Phoenix reported, yes, we've noticed temperature increases here, a nighttime average temperature increase of nine degrees since the 1990s, that actually 78% of cities globally, of 240 cities surveyed, noticed the same thing of temperature increases. Actually, 2014 was noted, the warmest year on record globally. And intensity of rainfall, when asked this, we said, yes, we're noticing this intensity of rainfall here in Phoenix. And interesting that almost two-thirds of cities also notice this as well. And drought, sea level rise, similar thing. And why I mention this particular slide is as we think of that policy context and that 98% of resources are coming from our global economy, that we really need to think about how do we become resilient, there's actually a lot of developing those industries here locally. And what is the role of cities and how we get there? And 85% of the U.S. population lives in cities. And cities, as Mayor, former Mayor Bloomberg used to say, is cities are where it's at. They actually have some unique ability in delivering projects. They're actually able to get funding both federally and state and deliver many programs. And so cities are really the catalyst globally of that are actually achieving a lot of the objectives. And some of the leaders, back in 2006, the story was a little bit different than when New York and Seattle, Portland, Vancouver were discussing, what do we need to do to be a sustainable city? And at the time, there was this thought that they'd really, it was a big pill to swallow, but we need to show this leadership, we need to go and do this at the time. And one of the things that they found as they've set these really long-term ambitious goals and targets, one of the things they've discovered over the last few years is that businesses are choosing, sort of like a windfall for these communities, that businesses are choosing to locate to sustainable cities. They say, cities that are looking at these things and their resiliency long-term, that for business continuity, it's actually prudent for them to locate themselves in these cities for their, that align with their corporate social responsibility goals, that make it available for their employees to have easy commutes to work, where there's a great standard of living in those communities. So really important from businesses choosing that. And the other one for the last decade, the global investors have really, they were probably the forerunners in really valuing sustainability. And many hundred billion dollar pension funds, some of them are actually directing 100% of their investments to only towards businesses that are, have very strong corporate social responsibility goals. That the investment community is really geared and recognizes that if you're going to be investing your funds long-term in places that ultimately they really need to be thinking about these things in the long-term and their long-term resiliency. And it's interesting, a presentation from Moody's this last fall, that they actually, who recently just gave us our AA1 credit rating, which is great and really good from our bond market perspective. And they have said that the investment community is really getting increasing pressure to them to start including sustainability criteria within their rankings of cities that, and it really makes sense from the perspective that if you're rating a city for bond markets for 20 years, that you really need to have a city looking at these things and looking at how they're really treating and moving forward. And these two are very important, but however, the most surprising innovation that many of these cities didn't think of back in the early days are discovering now is that the stretch targets that they sent, they set are really leading to surprising innovations. And those innovations are actually leading to really significant cost reductions that weren't really anticipated. And so we've even seen this here in the city of Phoenix. We've actually now are really leading the way on alternative fuels and 60% of our fleet is alternative fuels. And it's resulted in significant cost reductions on the fleet side that we're buying directly from the pipeline and the price we pay for fuel here is cheaper than all of the surrounding municipalities. And our CNG, very, very cost-effective in comparison. So some really great, as we have those. Another good example is where you sort of do the right thing and make those choices and you discover some really economic benefits is one is the, our graffiti. We have 100,000 sites, remarkable how many sites we clean up every year with graffiti. And we used to use propellants to clean a lot of these products. They were the ones that use the industry standard for doing that. And there was really a concern to say, look, we really should look at some more environmentally friendly products. And our suppliers didn't seem to have them. So we did a request for interest a number of years ago. And we actually had someone propose a product that was a completely green, environmentally friendly product. The staff tried it and it actually cleaned better and faster than the previous products that we had. And the best part was it was 40% cheaper than the product we've been using because we order it in such great quantities. And so we actually are doing the right thing. We're more environmentally friendly, not releasing chemicals into a system around us and yet also saving significant amounts of money. And looking at how we're really rated, this is the big question and part of today is how are we really ranked? And looking at the Economist Intelligence Unit, they are truly the organization you want to be rated by. They are the bees knees of organizations who really rank cities. And they did a very robust study looking at what are the best practices these cities are adopting. And Phoenix was ranked 24th, Chicago 11th, you can see San Francisco, Vancouver, first and second for cities in Canada and the U.S. out of 27 cities. And it was interesting though, there was a fairly tight grouping in the middle. We were really, all the cities rated ahead of us were all very, very much had really strong policies regarding sustainability. And it was interesting though, a pretty flat line, if you look at this graph, between where Phoenix is and where Chicago is, a very well-known green city, that Phoenix is quite attainable by putting in some really practical policies that make sense within our region, that we could actually very quickly be in the top 10 of cities. And these will be doing practices that actually make a lot of sense for us. And other rating systems, the American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy, they've done rankings every year. And the 2014 is about to come out, but the 2013, we're 15th. The usual suspect cities were the leaders in the top five. And Phoenix, but also very similar in this one, when we look and evaluate, that actually some, we're actually pretty close to actually being and moving up to around 10th place. And it's not that city rankings are the be-all, end-all, like it's just a ranking. But it's really, what it represents though, is how many of the really best practices cities have adopted around making a city sustainable, doing these things that are actually their best prudent and recognized globally as the best practices. So it's really an indicator for how many best practices a city we've adopted. And looking at a graph of really doing some detailed analysis here, this is called a spider diagram. And the goal here is to actually be as much towards the outside as possible. And the blue boxes indicate what are the objectives around, sort of the scores around the outside of how we were evaluated on these various points, these nine points around the outside. And Phoenix is the blue line and kind of the medium color, darker gray, is how the average of the 27 cities were. And then the very outside, the lighter gray, is where the best cities were in each of those categories. So we really want to be more towards the outside, but you can see certain areas were even below the national average. For example, if you look at waste in the, about the seven o'clock position there, we're below the national average. So we're at 14% waste aversion, the national average is 25%, and the leaders are around 70% waste aversion. So you can see as we want to move and push those out around that circle. And so what do we do really well at? When we, we are met or exceeded the average, when we compare ourselves to others, we kind of shone in greenhouse gases, energy and water. And some of those reasons I kind of mentioned already around looking at being a leader in alternative fuels, that the metro Phoenix area is 60 million gallons of petroleum saved because of our real efforts that we've done and staff and council should really congratulate it as they've really pushed these forward over the last number of years. Because we are, we are more than all of Southern California as far as on petroleum save. Now, there are 23 million people, yet we're still, through our policies, actually saving more on petroleum products from our alternative fuels. And we're five times even a large city like Los Angeles. And we're about to be recognized, Department of Energy as far as coming with an award and will be bringing that to you shortly around an award we have for a really, I would say remarkable and outstanding achievement in this area. And also, well-known as our leader in water innovation. So some cities are now looking at groundwater management, which we've been doing for many decades. And things like Tucson Storage and the Resiliency Fund that is council-approved, very innovative projects and are really leading the way in the U.S. And actually Trace Rios is a great example of where innovation can actually also lead to significant cost reductions that I was mentioning earlier. Having that and restoring an ecosystem and really doing the right thing at the same time saved us $300 million instead of building a sewage treatment plant. So here you're really doing and restoring this really great environment where you don't even know when you're there that you're actually in Phoenix. It's remarkable. But really incredible savings, not only at the time of construction, but you think we're not having to pay for just doing that treatment ongoing in the, over the long term. So great innovation in water. And some of the other things that we're taking on since this ranking, our general plan update, certainly in line with best practice following the Star Communities Network, a great initiative, our Reimagine Phoenix, that we recognized early that we really need to jump and leapfrog many communities and get to 40% waste aversion. A transportation plan that's currently underway and we're working on, will be working on in the next few years will be a really important part. And our grid bikes just released in the downtown. I hope you've had a chance to ride them, they're a lot of fun. And as well, when we brought this to subcommittee, they actually had recommended that we do some actions around some, maybe some lighting retrofits prior to the Super Bowl. And so we actually, the aviation was pretty quick to do some lighting retrofits, a team arrivals area. But they've actually have been doing quite a number of LED lighting retrofits over the number of years. They've been really progressive and they're auditing currently all of their properties to look at what the energy-saving opportunities are there. So some real leader out in aviation around this. And so kind of just going back to the spider diagram, so really where we want to focus and as far as what should be our short-term, shorter-term policy objectives, really where we need to make up some ground is around buildings, transportation and environmental governance in the top corner there. And the environmental governance is really saying that what responsibilities city have to set, are we really obligated to set any long-term goals? So we really want to begin that process to set some long-term goals and objectives. And for other considerations, these are not for council and we're really discussing them today, but just kind of giving kind of a description of some policies that would be really, that other cities have adopted that are, would be, we could consider. One is a building energy benchmarking ordinance. It's really just around getting, building owners, he's a free tool, that is, to really rate their building and see how it compares to other buildings around it. It's not actually getting them to do anything, just to rate their building, but they've actually found by building owners just being aware of their energy use compared to their buildings around them, that they actually can say, they actually are taking lots of action just voluntarily. And for energy efficient building code, this isn't to do anything too much as far as a really green code. It's actually just saying what are, working with industry and talking to the single-family builders, we want to do this initiative over the next number of months and maybe later in this year even, to say, what are the real practical things that are really the, maybe a three-year payback, really make a lot of sense and that many even the leading builders are already doing and that maybe we should just lower the, raise the baseline that all builders will do it across the board. So it's kind of a level playing field, just the things that make really common sense and save homeowners initially, such as things such as improving, say, air tightness in buildings, a really low-cost measure, but actually really improves comfort and energy savings within the building. So those types of things we'll have in discussion. And I don't know whether that one in particular, but just, that was just an idea. And the last one for later in 2015, really going to bring forward, I think it's really important to bring forward some policies to really accelerate and put on steroids our acceleration to waste aversion, our Reimagine Phoenix, to bring in some policies. We're at 14% and we have five years to get to 40. We really need to say, what can we do to really move that? And it's interesting, the public is certainly on board with recognizing this is an important thing to do as is council. And so really see those are important. With those policies, I think we'd be really in good stead going forward. So one last project, now this has kind of been evaluated since the subcommittee, but it's actually evaluated to look at what would happen if, like how would a project viability around replacing 90,000 streetlights, all, every streetlight in the city with an LED streetlight? And to do this, including paying back, paying back for the capital cost of doing that and the energy savings that result from that, we could save a million dollars a year from the general fund just by retrofitting all of our streetlights with LED. And it's a real opportunity and because it's been a discussion for a while, staff has really tested lots of different types of LED. We're pretty knowledgeable exactly how we want to move ahead with this. So a really great opportunity to put that RFP out. And just a couple of things I wanted to mention about that is that, one is that when we go out to RFP, there's a couple of options we have and we're going to actually specify within the RFP to say, tell us your options for, should the city pay for it or should, are there vendor financing options or third-party financing options? And the other one is actually, are there any other technologies we can roll out with that? Because LED is electronic technology, you can do things like network them and do local area networks and serve Wi-Fi or attach cameras. So, excuse me. So really, what are some other opportunities with that? So in conclusion, this is really what we're bringing forward for recommendation today as recommended by FEEs to really direct staff to develop this 2050 long-term sustainability goals and some interim targets to bring back to council and also to go out to the community on. And then also to continue to encourage Sky Harbor Airport to continue with LED lighting retrofit projects. They have a number that they could bring forward within their CIP later this year. And secondly, to approve, staff to issue an RFP to obtain LED streetlight replacement proposals that we can bring back forward to council for consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for that outstanding presentation. I very, very much appreciate how you laid out the case as much possible. So that's the recommendation from our professional city staff is that we give authorization to Mark to begin to do the 2050 goals, that we authorize the RFP to obtain LED streetlight and then do a separate, I don't know if it's separate or together, but streetlight LED replacement, excuse me, LED replacement at Sky Harbor. All right. Do we have a motion on that item or another motion? And then we'll hear from the council about their thoughts. Councilman Gates.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, just a couple of things. Mark, it's great to have you on board. I know we've been waiting to get a chief sustainability officer here for a while and already after a short period of time, we have a proposal to move forward with an RFP on LED. So thank you, I appreciate that, Mark, and I think that's very important. You know, we all kind of come at sustainability from different directions. For me, it's a dollars and cents issue and that's why I'm thrilled to see this LED proposal that's going to save us a million dollars a year for 15 years. So I would make this motion, the staff recommendation, specifically though, want to make clear on 2050 goals, there aren't any specific goals here, it's just saying, go and work them up. And then obviously come back to the subcommittee, I assume, and then the council and see if there is a comfort level and support on it. But specifically, it is to move forward with the RFP now on LED. And two things, I guess I would just underline on the LED is one, that we really are, we write it in a very broad way so that, Mark, as you said, all options will be on the table. Not only the city paying for it with their funds, but also others, you know, third parties coming in, either financing it for us or owning it all, right? I think we need to look at, look at all those options on the table. And then secondly, taking the opportunity here to include in that RFP other, you know, options that can be available while we're in there changing the lights, you know, are there nodes that can be added, are there technologies with all sorts of applications from Wi-Fi to other opportunities? So with that, that's my motion.
Second, but I'd also like to add a friendly motion if I could, or some friendly amendment if I may.
All right. A motion, we have a second. Councilman, you have a potential friendly amendment?
Like to ask, there's been a big issue, we'll get into a little bit deeper too, dealing with the private monitoring of individual energy use, that we exclude that from this, but that comes separately to the council. But that, that comes separately to the council if that's where they're going to be going. That that is a totally separate issue that could come to the council separately after they've discussed that and for council to vote on it.
That.
Not be included in this 2050, but that be a wholly separate item. And just so that the public is aware, the entire business community has organized, there's a lot more going on on this than this really nice fancy report here. And I appreciate all the work you put into it, Mark, but there are other issues and other concerns that need to be thoroughly vetted out, that not until recently, city staff put together a stakeholder meeting. And to some degree, it was only done because the business community said, hey, we want to be a part of this and they were being left out of it. So I want to make sure there's a clear exclusion of the private monitoring of individuals, individual businesses. And if they want to bring it back, they can, because you can always have a right to do that. But that be separated from the 2050 sustainability goals.
So Mayor, I would accept that friendly mimic because that was not part of my motion in the first place. That is, those are separate items that are to be, you know, vetted at a different time. So I would.
Okay, thank you.
I think each of, each of the individual components will be separately vetted through this, through this council. But I think the, the direction would be to give, allow Mark to go develop proposed stretch goals for the city, 2050 goals that we could then adopt or alter. Any individual policy about how we get there would be separately voted on by this council, of course.
So that is in part of the motion. Perfect. Thank you.
It is. Okay. Let's see, Councilman Nowakowski, then Councilman Gago, and then Vice Mayor.
Just some clarification. So there's a, what's the $27 million that we're talking about? Is that the cost to replace the, all the?
The 27 million was just a pricing we got just from one vendor, just to sort of see, in order to do our business case. So we looked, we called a number of cities and actually got pricing and did a rough in order to do a business case and prove it out that this would actually, but it's in thought that actually going to an RFP and asking for proposals, we'd get a variance in what, different proposals of what basic services are going to offer for that. So the, that, that is strictly, any, any funding or anything will strictly come when we actually have results to an RFP and we bring those specific numbers to council for consideration.
And Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, that is specifically for the replacement of the 90,000 LED lights?
Well, my concern is that if we're going to have an RFP out there and we're going to have individuals look at our lights and it's, we're estimating about $27 million and we're looking right now at replacing our, our phone system and our infrastructure and all that, I really like to see a financial snapshot of the city of Phoenix because I would hate somebody to go out there and spend 20 to 60 million dollars to put an RFP together for us and then all of a sudden we're going to tell them, well, we don't have the funding to actually support what we're, what we're pushing. Unless my colleagues feel comfortable about that number. But right now, I'm not really sure if we're going to be in a deficit coming up in the near future. We haven't gotten that report from our city manager yet. And I think I'd like to look at a financial snapshot of where the city's at right now before we, we go after these big budget items right now. Or it might be something that we need to look at passing on to the following year.
Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, I would just say the, the RFP would allow us to take a look at this. So the, the thought would be that if we spend $27 million, it's a return of that $27 million plus an additional million dollars each year. And so the RFP would come back to us and tell us how that would be done. So I'm confident at this point that it would not add to our, any possible budget shortfall. And in fact, it might actually narrow that or provide us resources for other infrastructure that we might need. But certainly we would not commit the city to anything before doing that analysis that you request and coming back to the council with that.
Okay. The other thing I was going to ask is that I know that Councilman Gates talked about other technology. I know out in Vice Mayor's area, we have those solar light poles wrapped with solar blankets. Have we looked at maybe, is that a part of that where we're going to look at maybe solar blankets on all of our light poles? At one time, an individual came to one of our subcommittees saying that if we actually turned all of our light poles into solar energy-driven light, that we can actually be the largest solar farm in the country. So is that a part of that technology aspect of it?
We, so we did a pilot project to evaluate solar wrapped lights. And the conclusion of it was that it, because our lights are not metered, it made it a very, a very big challenge for us to be able to capture that energy other than to, to just use it for the lights during the day. Or I mean during, you know, while, while they were on when the, the solar power had captured, the solar panels had captured the power. We certainly could consider including solar in this because technologies keep evolving and it may, it may change. We certainly could consider including solar as an option in, in this RFP. We're not aware of any large-scale solar installations that have been successful thus far, but I, I, I don't think it would be a problem, Councilman, to consider to include that.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman.
Thank you. Thank you to, to Mark and thank you to everyone who made it so that we have a C-level sustainability officer at the city of Phoenix. It is exciting that we've made that commitment as a city to sustainability and very glad to have you and your expertise here. And thank you to Councilman Gates and, and your subcommittee for your leadership in bringing this forward. It's exciting for Phoenix. I'm glad we're reaching even further. However, I do want to remember the past since early in my career, I was involved with the solar energy standard and some of our goals related to shade. So how would we be able to meld the fact that we do have some sustainability goals, some of which are very ambitious and almost all of which are, have deadlines before 2050 with these new?
Actually, the general plan has very much paved the way and had a lot of that conversation and really articulated some of what that community is. We don't necessarily have long-term goals coming from that. We've actually, some of the interim goals. So I think it would, it would actually fit very nicely with our general plan. So a lot of the work has already been done in engaging the community as far as initially at least getting a framework for what that might look like. So there's actually a, it's a, it's, this would really align well with the general plan and it would just set what is the long-term endpoint and some real goals that the general plan is really articulated while in the shorter term.
Wonderful. And I hope in addition to the general plan, we can look at the renewable energy goal. We have a climate change program. We have a goal related to shade. And so I think it's important that citizens know we'll be taking the input from those previous process and incorporating that.
Absolutely.
In this so that we can also speak very articulately about all that we're doing because it's very broad and we've been an early leader and we don't always do a great job telling our story about sustainability in Phoenix, but we are really doing a lot in the city. And this will be a great opportunity to put it all in one place and share it with those businesses that are looking to locate and invest in communities that share that commitment. So appreciate that very much. One of the things that I'm very excited about is the link between sustainability and economic development. And in District Eight, we have great businesses like Dirt, which does sustainable building materials using recycled materials. And we have many companies that take what used to be waste products and turn them into usable materials. And so I would love it, even if the economists won't rank us on it, that we have a goal related to sustainable business and, and supporting that. We've been a leader in that area and with the mayor's work on kick the waste with the Super Bowl, we've had a chance to highlight that a little bit. And I want to continue that momentum. I think that's an important part of our brand, that connection to sustainable business. And it takes advantage of some unique things about the amount of, our climate here and the availability of land we have as well that will put us in a strategic advantage. And I would also love to see it if we could do a little bit more on the customer-facing side, particularly on our utility side with customer programs. Because I think that gives us a great chance to engage with our citizens and would love to see it if we have a goal in that area. And then I wanted to also move to LED lighting and, and sort of echo some of the things Councilwoman Nowakowski was, was alluding to. We both represent areas that include mountain ranges and my now-retired chief of staff may have retired a little bit earlier because of some of the issues with streetlights in, in that area and just the real expense for us in getting the conduit out through hard rock. So to me, solar was the cost-effective alternative. And I suspect that that is true in the other, more difficult to reach areas of our city. So I would love it if we could have an RFP that looks at solar energy. And it's probably too late, but there is an open docket that's looking at how we, how one utility looks at solar or at streetlights and pricing plans for streetlights. So if the reason we're doing it is because of a bad pricing incentive, one alternative there is to look at an opportunity to change that pricing incentive so that we do recover more for our citizens. So I hope that solar will be a part or an option with this LED because once these individuals said they wanted these lights for public safety, we didn't have all the options easily. And, and so this is a chance for us to look at how we do contracts for maintenance of streetlights and whether we can also make that part of our sustainability future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. So yesterday, we had our regularly scheduled agenda-setting meeting and city manager's there, his staff, mayor's there with his staff. And I asked, was there going to be any controversy or pushback about this? And the answer was no. And then, you know, here we are today and there was quite a bit of controversy or at least business groups were certainly upset. I heard from three different and distinct business groups that have large number of members and then one big company that was all up in arms. Now, I guess we're saying erroneously because of the things they were concerned about, we haven't decided to do yet. But still, I just want to make sure going forward, communication being what it is, I mean, I don't know who you guys were talking to, but, but clearly there were a lot of groups that were really upset. They were upset about a meeting yesterday where it sounds like the word, in their words, the word forced was used. We're going to force you guys to do X, Y, and Z. And they counted. They said it was used four times. I don't know if it was or not. I wasn't there. But so, so much better to have a collaborative effort than to go telling a bunch of business leaders, you're going to force them to do something. Oh, and by the way, they thought, they came away from the meeting thinking the vote was today and this was yesterday. That's all bad. So I would just hope we'd work on our communication skills here. I, I was sort of shocked that yesterday morning I'm asking a question because I was pretty sure there was an undercurrent of dissent from our business community. And I was assured that there was not. And I think history has shown that I may have been on to something that there was. So we do have a plan. I think, Rick, you're reaching out and going to have big stakeholder meetings now and be more inclusive. But, but please be careful how you frame what we might do, not today, but what we might do in the future. Because that was, I think that caused more aggravation than it needed to for a lot of folks who were pretty ramped up.
Okay. And first, I, I hope you don't reference me when you say that there was a misrepresentation as to outreach.
I'm not saying it's a misrepresentation. You seemed unaware. I think that's a fair statement. No, nobody at that meeting said, oh yes, there is going to be a lot of pushback today. Well, there would have been a lot of pushback here today if, if I hadn't heard from some people.
I'm so sorry. I apologize because the benchmarking ordinance was never on the agenda today. It's going through the appropriate subcommittee process. I think that what the, what the presentation was, was authorization of long-term goals, the LED. And then there were some examples of future things that, that may be coming forward. But obviously we go through the, the appropriate subcommittee process. So I.
I'm not saying the concern was warranted. I'm just surprised that there was no understanding on our staff's part communicated to you. I'm not saying it is your fault. I'm not saying that it was not communicated to the city manager clearly that there was this concern. And this concern was out there. Whether it was warranted or not is a different story. But I, I was pretty surprised that nothing had bubbled up, given the calls and the people I was hearing from in the last 24 hours. And Rick is nodding his head. He knows exactly what I'm talking about. I didn't have a chance to speak with you about it, but, but Ed, I did call you last night and Rick happened to be there. So I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page going forward and that we are treating our business community with respect and the groups that represent them with respect. Because they were pretty, pretty upset, whether they should have been or not. And it's not your fault. I'm not saying it that way, so please don't take it that way. But I was surprised that nobody seemed to have any knowledge of this, whether it was merited, as I said, or not.
So Mayor, Councilman, Vice Mayor Waring and members of the council, just to clarify what Vice Mayor Waring is talking about.
Thank you.
I think, I, I noticed some people looking a little puzzled. So I, first of all, I do apologize if staff has miscommunicated with anybody in the community or any of you about what was being discussed today. And in particular, the issue that people have expressed some concern about in the business community is one of the items that was on the list of things that we want to take a look at as a possible way to move forward our, our work in the buildings category and energy efficiency category, which has to do with the energy, the building energy efficiency rating system that would, that many cities across the nation have adopted. It's called energy benchmarking. We're not prepared today to go into all the details of what that is. We have begun doing some outreach in the community to educate people about what those things are. And we have received some feedbacks from some businesses or business organizations that they're not excited about the idea. We have a lot more work to do. And as you know, when we develop new policies in this arena, out in the community, we tend to do it in a way in which we work with stakeholders and then, you know, help to shape our, what we're going, what we're going to bring forward. Great example is the Bag Central Station that we did with, with our plastic bag waste. I think the, however communications rolled and who, you know, one person talked to the next and talked to the next, it was not, it was not a good communication. And I think people thought, number one, that you were voting on something today, which we haven't even, you know.
And they took that away from a briefing that was yesterday. I mean.
I understand and I think that was a miscommunication. I've spoken with most of the representatives of those various organizations and they understand we're going to do a good job of reaching out, getting and hearing all parties' input and interest before we bring a recommendation to you. And in fact, in talking with Councilman Gates about coming forward to his subcommittee, I think the first time we come forward, we haven't briefed any of you on this, on this idea even, before, before we come forward to subcommittee, we're going to come first for information. And so.
Mayor, Mayor, I need to, that's not what the motion was. And if staff could be clear on this thing, the motion was that the private sector, monitoring individuals in the private sector was going to be left out of the 2050 plan and that would be completely separated. Is that correct? Is that what staff heard?
Yes. You are not adopting anything today.
No, it's not adopting. You're using language that's not appropriate because we all understand we're not adopting. I'm telling you, moving forward in the 2050 plan, it is not going to be included, the private monitoring of those people in the, in the, in the private sector is not going to be part of that plan. But if you want to move it forward, it comes in separately. Is that what we heard?
I think my change, I want to make sure it's clear is that each of the, each of the proposed or ideas that, that, that Mark had suggested, each policy that would be new or different than we ever adopted, would have to be individually adopted by this council before it could be included in, in the plan. So I think we're going to have a healthy.
I just want to make sure that it's not part of the 2050 plan. I just want staff to say that that's what they heard and it's on the record, that it's not going to be part of the 2050 plan and that the private monitoring of individuals and businesses will not be part of the plan. And if you're going to bring it forward, it comes completely separated.
I think we'd have to do that, we would have to adopt it before it would become part of the plan. So until this council adopts it.
Mayor, I'm just asking what the motion was. I'm not trying to get into a debate with you. I want clarity on the motion because this is what they do. If you look at what happened here today.
Thank you.
I want to make sure that, answer my question. Is that what you heard? Yes or no?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's why I want to make sure.
Yeah, I want to make sure it's clear because I thought the clarification was that each of the individual policies, whether it be benchmarking or the, of the ideas, before anything included in 2050 plan, obviously would have to be vetted through subcommittee and go through the appropriate council. So suggestion of that anything would be done differently would be an inappropriate suggestion.
I just wanted to make sure, Mayor, that that one item be separated completely from the 2050 plan.
I think the point is it's not that one item. It's all of the.
Well, you can, that's not the motion. I want to make sure I know what the motion was. The motion was that and I want to make sure I got it on the record. And if there's any disagreement from the attorneys or anyone else, because that is very clear. This is a big debate. It's happening in the business community and is something of concern to people being monitored by their government. So I want to make sure if there's any debate. If there isn't, fine. That's it. And I'm good. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So my, I guess my.
Is there any debate on it?
Friendly amendment to the friendly amendment is that any new public policy in the sustainability arena would have to be, go through the subcommittee process, go before this council before it would be included in any plan, a 2050 plan, which would, which would be, I guess, the normal course. I guess that's the point is that you're making a point that I think everyone sort of sees as the common sense. Of course, we're not going to throw something, we. Of course, we're not going to throw something, we wouldn't adopt the policy, a new policy, without going through the subcommittee and the council process.
Here, we're talking two different things.
So I'm asking for a friendly amendment, so all new, any new public policy, including benchmarking, would go through the subcommittee and this council before it be included in the 2050 plan.
As separate items. Separate items, not part of an overall plan.
All right, so that sounds like it's friendly, is adopt, okay.
It is, wait, let me make sure-
Secondary adopt, so that, yeah.
Well, I'm not, no, Mayor, I'm not, I want to make clear, because I know how staff does these things, and they're heading in a direction of monitoring those people in the private sector, and I want to be clear on that.
Mayor, Councilman's not heading in that direction.
Yeah, let's please, I'm going to the City Manager, because the suggestion that our professional staff engages in subterfuge of some sort of thing is inappropriate, but can the City Manager please-
Well, no, it's not inappropriate, because, look at what's occurred here, Mayor.
I'm going to the City Manager respond, because I think it's, the insinuation is that there is some sort of subterfuge going on here, please.
I think, Mayor, Councilman, we're all saying the same thing. There is no 2050 plan at the moment, and what the motion is, is that we will bring, when we bring the plan back, it will be item by item through Councilman Gates's subcommittee, and that every item will be separately debated and discussed.
That's not it. You said when you bring the plan back, it will not be part of the plan, monitoring of individuals, monitoring of people in the private sector will not be part of the plan. That's going to be an entirely separate item that comes through later, individually. That's what the motion was, and correct me if I'm wrong. If it is, then we'll make sure it's clear.
Let's ask the maker of the motion to clarify, so that's probably the most appropriate way of going about this, so we can move on. Councilman?
Yes, no, again, this is about giving staff the authority to put together goals for 2050 and to have an RFP for LED, and specifically, I was requested to add a friendly amendment that this does not include any monitoring of buildings. That's not part of this.
What?
Correct. It's not part of the motion.
And Mayor and councilmembers, one other clarification around 2050 goals are really about outcomes of where you want to get to, they're not about actual programs, so it's not like, here's a list of all the things we're going to do between now and 2050. What it is, is saying, what do we want to get to as far as air quality, what should our eventual air quality be, where do we want to be as far as water conservation in those days? It's actually an outcome-based, it's not recommending solutions for how to get water.
Mark, where were you 15 minutes ago? Jeez, good point, all right. Councilmember?
Rick, you and I briefly talked about LED lights earlier, because for the last five years, you've said you can't switch them all out because they'll all burn out at the same time. You explained to me that there's better technology than there has been in the last few years, but how long do you think it would change, take to change 90,000 lights? Are you talking a year, or is that part of the-
With projects from other cities, that it's quite, it's accomplishable in a single year.
In one year, and that would be part of the RFP.
And, well, we will ask for varying, and within the RFP, we'll ask for various implementation timelines, and it'll certainly be up to the vendors to recommend, and if there was some cost efficiency withdrawing it over longer, then we might want to consider that one, but we'll ultimately do what is the most cost-effective and where the greatest savings will result from, as opposed to saying we have some reason to want to do all LED in one year. It's really just what is the most cost-effective way to do it, and the idea of one year is just, it has the benefit of bulk savings, of bulk buying them all at once, so that is the reason why it really favors going to that single year, but we're certainly open to whatever suppliers who, and their capability of actually even delivering it within a year.
So you're anticipating the vendor will put the bulbs in?
Yes, we will, the RFP will actually be for supply and install-
And install.
And provide warranty for an LED light replacement project, and also to represent other options that are available around financing and around other technologies they could also layer on top of that.
And just to answer your other question about burnout, and we discussed this, but just so it's there on the, for everybody, when you look at, all of our traffic signals are LED now, and the way they burn out is not all at once, each light emitting diode, which is what LED stands for, they burn out at different moments, so they sort of begin to fade, and then you know you need to replace a certain one when certain light levels are not reached. So, it's not going to be all of a sudden they all go out because they all are the same life, but they will begin to start losing their light over time, and we'll monitor that and replace them, and that'll be part of the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thanks for your good work, appreciate it. Look forward to seeing the plans and the RFP. All right, next item on the agenda is our regular legislative update. We're going to do this each and every meeting that we have, a policy session during the legislative session. The Vice Mayor asked if that was a threat. Depends on your point of view, but yes, it's going to happen. Threat or a promise, we're doing it. All right, so, without further ado, and I know we have a busy agenda, Tom Remus, our Intergovernmental Director.
Mayor and council, I'm Tom Remus with the Office of Government Relations. Joining me today is John Gonzalez and Neil Young, the city's chief financial officer. We're here to provide you a brief state legislative update. Today is the 16th day of the legislative session, and more than 800 bills have been introduced. We're expecting that number to more than double by next week, and at this time, city staff are closely reviewing each and every bill that has been introduced, looking for any city impacts. We will be back before you on February 10th with recommendations at that time. I know many of you have come to our office and shared that there are certain bills that you're interested in. Please be assured, we are looking at those, and we will be bringing those back. I want to point out, as many of you know, state shared revenues are incredibly important to the city of Phoenix. Last year, the city received $340 million in state shared revenues, and for those who are viewing the meeting today, just want to point out that these state shared revenues are monies that are collected by the state and then distributed back to cities and towns based on their population. It's derived from state income, sales, gas, and vehicle license tax. The voters approved in 1942, 1946, 1960, and 1972 to have this distribution formula. I should point out that, as the chart up there shows, 34% of the city's general fund budget is based on state shared revenues. Quickly, I want to mention, on January 16th, Governor Ducey released his budget to address the $678 million deficit for fiscal year 16. The proposed budget does not impact the state shared revenue formula, which is good news. What it does do is it makes state agency program cuts, talks about debt refinancing, increased fees, revenue diversion from local government, which we'll talk about next, and using the state's rainy day fund. The impacts for the city of Phoenix include taking a portion of the state sales tax, also known as transaction privilege tax, or TPT, and reducing 8.2 million that would be used by this Arizona Department of Revenue for ongoing administration of the tax collection system. Of that 8.2 million, Phoenix's share is 2.6 million. There's also a one-time assessment of a 76 cent per resident fee for non-program cities, and what non-program means are those cities and towns that currently collect their own taxes. For Phoenix, that impact would be $1 million. There's also an assessment to pay the Department of Revenue collection staff that would impact Phoenix by $150,000. The governor's proposed plan estimates that all of these changes for the Department of Revenue will increase sales tax collections to offset those costs. Lastly, I should point out, the budget is reducing the ambulance reimbursement rates that the city fire department receives when responding to access patients, so that reduction will be an impact of $2 million. So the total impact for the governor's proposed budget would be $5.7 million for Phoenix, but I should point out, this is a proposed budget. This is something that the governor presents. We have the legislature yet to react and provide their budget. When that information becomes available, we will come back to the mayor and council and share that information with you. What I'd like to do next is ask Neil Young to talk about the transaction privilege tax or sales tax implementation that has been going on for the past two years. Neil has been working closely with various stakeholders from the state on this process.
Thank you, Tom. Vice Mayor, members of council, the transaction privilege tax, House Bill 2111, has indeed been going on for quite some time. As you are all aware, the state decided to defer complete implementation of House Bill 2111 until January 1 of 2016. The primary reason for the deferral had to do with the readiness of the Department of Revenue automation and their ability to provide cities the necessary data. Since that time, they have hired a project manager, and in addition, developed all the necessary work plans, and I would describe the progress on the automation from the start of this year as adequate. It's moving along at what I would consider to be an appropriate pace, and we will continue to monitor that very, very closely. In order to complete some of the House Bill 2111 implementation, there's been two IGA amendments that council has approved for us to enter into with the Department of Revenue. The first was the audit component of the IGA, so that was recently signed off in December that would allow Phoenix NDR to implement the House Bill 2111 audit provisions. In addition, there were some issues surrounding licensing, since there was going to be a deferral of House Bill 2111 implementation, it was important that we had an appropriate method to continue to license businesses. That IGA has also been approved by council and is going into effect right now. That'll allow us, the city of Phoenix, to maintain the licensing responsibilities through the end of this calendar year. In addition, because of the deferral, we continue to perform regular, ongoing tax administration duties. The other important things about the transaction privilege tax implementation, House Bill 2111, has to do with the construction contracting. So, House Bill 2111 simplified some of the construction contracting terminology specifically around maintenance, repair, and replacement. Those things were going to be moved from construction contracting into an area where only the materials would be taxed going forward and not the full construction tax for those classifications. It was a little bit confusing, so last year, there was another bill, 2389, House Bill 2389 attempted to clarify that further by referring to alteration. Alteration, I think, ultimately resulted in confusing the industry, construction industry even further. So at this particular time, there is a move to create a very bright line as to what is construction contracting and what is not. The legislators have been working with the League of Cities and Towns to come up with what that bright line might be. They're very, I think, objective measures typically, and while the bill hasn't been dropped, and I am not aware of what the final recommendations will be, it appears as though one of the recommendations will result to residential properties. If a contractor is going to do work and the value of the contract would be in excess of 25% of the assessor's full cash value of the property, that would become a construction project. Below 25% of that full cash value would be repair or maintenance or alteration. As it relates to more commercial development, there are three tests that would be put in place. The first would be a contract for commercial construction in excess of $750,000. If the contract is in excess of $750,000, that would be construction. Second test has to do with 40% of the square footage of the building, so if, for example, someone has vacated a Home Depot and a new tenant has moved in, if the contractor is going to essentially tear out or rebuild more than 40% of that square footage, that would result in construction. And then finally, if more than 10% of the existing square footage would be added to a building, that also would result in construction. Below those thresholds, that would be maintenance, repair, replacement, or alteration. We expect that bill is going to be dropped in the very near future. It has an emergency clause. I believe it'll be dropped in both the House and the Senate at the same time and be in the governor's office very, very quickly, at least that's what we continue to be told.
And so the importance for us in terms of distinction between construction and maintenance and repair is, construction is taxed where it happens?
Correct.
Maintenance, repair, or alteration is taxed, the materials are taxed where they're bought, so that ends up having an impact on how much taxes we ultimately collect. We're not sure exactly what it is, but that's why the distinction is so important to make clear.
All right. Councilman Gates, did you have a question? Okay. The mayors have any questions?
Mayor and council, if I may, we are going to be asking for council direction on three bills that John Wayne could touch on very quickly in this presentation, so if I might, John could talk about those.
The first, the first bill on your list, House Bill 2254, this bill would eliminate the residential rental tax, prohibit cities and towns from having them, and those that do, would have to phase them out over four years until they're completely eliminated by June 30th of 2019. Staff has estimated that that would be a $30 million loss to the city of Phoenix, and of that, of those funds, $18 million would, we would lose out of the general fund. 12 million of those dollars currently are dedicated for police, fire, transit, parks, and preserves, the voter-approved initiatives that have been passed over several, over several years. So based on the financial impacts to the city of Phoenix and the impacts to the voter-approved measures that have been passed, staff is recommending to oppose.
All right. Let's do them separately. Everybody ready to vote on this one? Do we have a voice vote or a roll call? Roll call.
Vice Mayor?
You need a motion?
Oh, motion, I'm sorry.
I'm moving-
Sitting ahead of myself, who wants to make a motion, support staff recommendation or against?
I'll make the motion to oppose this bill.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Now, it's okay with everyone, we'll go ahead and do a roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio?
Councilwoman Gallego?
Yes.
Councilman Gates?
No.
Councilman Noakowski? Councilwoman Pastore? Councilman Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring?
No.
Councilwoman Williams? Mayor Stanton?
Yes.
Okay, so the next bill on your list-
Five, I voted five to-
Three.
Three, yeah, somebody, five to three. I voted five to three, motion to support passes.
To oppose.
Motion, all right, we passed the staff recommendation to oppose, sorry.
The next bill on your list actually does not have a bill number, but it deals with prisoner transition legislation. I must acknowledge that we have Mr. Jeff Taylor from the Salvation Army who's in the audience, who has approached the city and other entities about this issue. The state has had a, the Department of Corrections has had a transition program for well over 12, 13 years, and right now, it's servicing certain drug offenders, nonviolent drug offenders and other nonviolent individuals that are exiting the prison system, and it provides basically job counseling, drug counseling, all those other things that try to help people get back on their feet when they leave prison. What this bill does, and it was included in your packet, a draft, what the concept is, that it would increase the amount of individuals that can be served under this program. The goal is to get the number to about 3,500 next fiscal year, and potentially up to 5,000 two years from now. While there is not a direct correlation to city of Phoenix operations, staff has no problem supporting the measure, and Councilman DeCiccio requested that we put this forward for the council for their discussion and adoption.
Okay. We have Jeff Taylor from the Salvation Army wishing to speak. A few minutes, Mr. Taylor.
Good afternoon, members of the council. My name is Jeff Taylor, and I represent the Salvation Army. I know we're running a little late, so I'll run through very quickly. I think John Gonzalez did a good job of the overview, but why this affects the city of Phoenix is for a number of reasons. One is, is just a couple of statistics here from the Auditor General's office, the state of Arizona's population has doubled, and during that time, our prison population has increased almost tenfold. So that's over 1,000% over our general population, most of which are going to be released to our communities at some point in time. So what the transition legislation does is it just- So what the transition legislation does is it just expands an existing bill and program that's been in operation now for 11 years. And it has proven to, it's highly monitored, by the way. There has to be a report given to the executive, a report given to the Speaker of the House, and the President of the Senate every year. Simple report comparing recidivism rates or rearrest rates for people that receive transition versus people that don't receive transition. And so the rearrest rates have been cut significantly. Those figures are right now being worked out, but it's right in the realm of around 30 to 35% reduction in recidivism, which means less crime in our community. If you have people getting out of prison, that don't commit crime, then we have a safer community. Phoenix police, then, do not have to deal with those that may be rearrested. The group of people that we are targeting and have targeted are lower-end offenders. They usually are there first or second time, but they have a drug or are doing a drug motivated crime. It is restricted by statute that if there is any violence in their history, that the individual cannot be qualified for this program. So we're just saying, they're getting out anyway, let's let them out a little bit early. And during that time, let's give them drug treatment, parenting classes. We're dealing with Department of Child Safety right now on how to work with them to make our children more safe. If people are getting out, and maybe they had a problem with domestic violence, we deal with that also. So I think it's a good deal all the way around. I'll be glad to answer any questions to Councilman.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilwoman Gallego?
I do, thank you. Thank you for the work Salvation Army does, including after our floods. It was great to have you visit district aid and see some of the devastation, and we appreciate Salvation Army stepping up.
Thank you.
Also glad to see people getting the treatment they need and getting on the way to a better outcome. However, the city of Phoenix does, I think, more than our fair share to address a lot of different issues like homelessness and addiction and recovery. And we do have some concerns about concentrations of programs in certain areas. So could you talk a little bit about the geography of where this treatment would occur? And I personally feel like if people have support systems in the communities from which they came, that might be the best place for the treatment to occur. But we often have many of them coming to our urban core for treatments, including residential treatment programs, and so.
Yes, members of the council, Councilwoman Gallego, good question. The provider of the services is called Sage Counseling. They're the statewide provider, and they have 12 offices throughout Maricopa County. So it's spread out throughout Maricopa County. It also is really set up because a lot of people are navigating bus routes, and if you just have one or two locations, it's hard for them to get to those bus routes. They live in Surprise, and they're coming into downtown Phoenix, it would be difficult. So the provider opened up just for this contract, I think, an additional, I think, seven offices, but I'm not sure, something like that. Also, the individual, before they get out of prison, without the program, they can be released homeless. And that puts, and they usually end up on our doorstep or some of our shelters here downtown. And that's something that we were talking about with Councilman Noakowski, and also with Councilman DeCiccio, is that they can't go to the shelters. They're restricted by statute that they have to have an approved address prior to release. And by being a low-end offender, these are not people that have done 20 years in prison, they still have family support, and a lot of the population do go to their families. So there will not be, we don't foresee any way, and there hasn't been in the past, any clustering.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman DeCiccio?
Just a couple of things, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, at least. You know, it's all part of the prison reform package that everybody's been working on. And I think we've got even Bill Montgomery's on board with the proposal. Is that correct?
Yes.
With the county attorney? Literally what it's doing, it's taking those individuals that are in their last 90 days, they're about to be released anyways. And instead of keeping them incarcerated, which costs a lot of money in a lot of ways, one, it keeps them incarcerated, but it doesn't really get them prepared for what it's going to be like on the outside world, that there's mandatory counseling, mandatory drug treatment that they have to go through. And so, at the very least, it's one, less expensive, and two, if it keeps more people out of jail, then it provides more safety for our citizenry, too. And they're already going to be on their way out anyways. So what I want to make sure is when we're working on this, because I had the Department of Corrections call me yesterday, they're in a little bit of a panic, as they always are. You know, they wanted to get some clarity. I said, "Look, what they're doing now in their program, this would not affect, this would affect only those additional ones, to make sure that they're nonviolent offenders, that this would fit the marginal difference above what they already are working on right now through their, their program." And this is just a way of getting it, making sure that it gets done and get people the treatment that they need to have in order to be productive members of society.
Not that you're not fun to talk to, but the Department of Corrections think about calling an actual legislator?
Yeah.
But that's a whole nother.
Well.
Maybe that's part of their problem. Maybe that's why they're panicked. I don't know. Councilor in ways.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of comments, because having been around this field for a long time, transition is the key to success for prisoners when they're released. If they do not have that, their odds are not with them that they will stay sober and they won't return to jail. So I think it is an excellent idea. Furthermore, I'm very familiar with Sage Counseling, and they are an outstanding group, very dedicated to purpose, and have been a, I think their track record, they've done probably 10, 15 years providing this type of service. So they're very experienced. And I think it is something that is better for our community. We know, so many of them come to Phoenix. If we have them in this service, we have had, they've had the opportunity to have transition, and not only, transition isn't just limited to few counseling. It's more life transition and placement. You set goals so that you know where you're going, what you're going to be doing, and how you're going to be doing it. And it's, it works. And I think it's advantage to the city of Phoenix, who so many drop-ins into our city who haven't had that opportunity create more problems for us. So I think it's something we should continually support.
And if I may, members of the council, and speaking to Councilman DeCiccio first, in that if someone is rearrested on a new crime that's come out of ADC, incidentally, how you measure the success of your prison program is by recidivism rates. How many people go back? In a perfect world, none would go back, but unfortunately, this is not a perfect world. And according to ADC's most recent report, 40%, or over 40% of our prison population is back in prison within four years. Now, in order to do that, most are going to go through the county jail, be arrested by Phoenix Police Department, and then while they're awaiting trial on the new charges or the probation redification or whatever it may be, that's $100 a day, I believe, 90 to $100 a day, I'm not sure. Each municipality is different. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about $90 a day the city pays Maricopa County Jail in order to house that inmate. So we're trying to avoid that, also increase public safety by not having the person do a crime in the first place. And in response to you, Councilwoman Williams, I think she's being a little bit, well, put it this way, I know of thousands of people in our community that had the opportunity to recover and to be taxpayers and not tax burdens, and to be back with their families and being really the parents that, as we at the Salvation Army like to say, that God meant them to be because of your work. Thank you, at the Sheriff's Department.
Thank you very much. In all this excitement, I don't know if we've had a motion. Did we have a motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
DeCiccio? Gallego?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Noakowski?
Yes.
Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes.
How many people were not? Just eight, zero. Thank you. By a vote of eight, zero, it passes. Livestock monitoring.
Yes.
Now, this is the important one.
Yes. Mayor and council members, the final bill to consider is House Bill 2429. This is a bill that's been a work in progress over the last couple of sessions. And basically, what this current version does is that it does, it modifies the criminal code to take city of Phoenix's animal hoarding language that's in our ordinance and codify that in state law. And it also adds some other items that allow the courts to maybe pursue some psychological evaluation of individuals if they are third strike, fourth strike, and what have you. The other thing the bill does is that it takes in Title III, which is the agricultural section, all these new stipulations of animal cruelty in that section of law. And the reason we have it as a bill to monitor is twofold. One, to make the council aware that this is an item that we may bring forward for a position. But two, it also allows the state to know that we are interested and do care, because the negotiation right now is over the language that is in the Department of Ag section, and making sure that the animal cruelty penalties match what's in criminal code. And with that, that's we position to monitor, is what staff is requesting, until there is a change in the bill. The same, easy to understand, I like it. Do we have any questions about this bill we are monitoring? I don't see any. On the phone, anybody questions? No, we're not voting, right?
Do we need a motion?
Yes, need a motion.
To monitor, we do?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilman DeCiccio?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gallego?
Yes.
Councilman Gates?
Yes.
Councilman Noakowski?
There he is.
Councilman Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Waring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Williams?
Yes.
Mayor Stanton?
Yes.
By a vote of seven to nothing, motion passes. Thank you very much. Any further business? Then class is dismissed.